Percy. Wow, this thing sure grew since this afternoon, Joe. Okay.
Hi, Mary.
Okay, I'll run through the agenda and if anybody has any questions on any item, give a yell. One. Feel like somebody's shooting at me. Uh, two. Three. That's the usual, uh, every year we have to do that, right?
What's the band?
With the Office of Court Administration. Okay. Four.
George, what's the band for Cortini?
Well, everybody has a sign over the sidewalk, tries to have a file of bond.
Oh, okay.
So every year, I think they do it yearly, don't they? Yeah. Treatment of the who's ward are we talking about? Mine. We were put on notice by the resident over there that there was a hazardous condition and the engineer went down and looked at it and it was okay.
The fact to the, uh, the tree, the tree outside area line, a tree company went down. And that was a hazard to that area as well as, uh, uh, from Beres. There's another one here in my ward, number seven, one of the west first street.
Okay, so they put us on notice, so we gotta do something, all right. Five. Crossing guard? I love crossing guards, they've been eliminated. Who's ward is that in?
No. On United Avenue Drive?
Is that yours, David Ross? Ross? Crossing guard?
On United Street? There's one there all the time.
There is one there?
In Holly Drive?
In Holly Drive?
It's United Avenue Drive. Oh, okay, okay, you're going further down. All right, this was something that, uh, came about because of an accident that was there and they talked to Joey Ilo about it. And, uh, you wrote a letter, um, stating that it was a good idea to put one there. Cause there are a lot of children that come from Anita Village and stay down the corner there during the busy, busy time. They have one on United and Seven.
How do we finance it?
It's budgeted for, but it's not a thing yet.
Oh, it is budgeted? Okay. Uh, six, I guess, or doesn't have to be voted on. Seven, that's tree removal, John already mentioned. Eight. These are all bills, I guess, if they're budgeted right. Nine is city parks report. Ten. That's for the advertiser for public hearing. Eleven.
That's over in my ward, that's a real dark area over by Jack Riley's house, right there where he's bunching up.
Nine awards put in the light?
What we have to do is we have to authorize them to do that.
Okay. They pay for it, yeah?
They put to light it, but we pay, we pay the field as well, I don't think, but they, they install it.
Okay, twelve, other public hearing, advertising for, which is thirteen. V A N. Reconstruct, what's that?
That's, that's in my ward, I don't know about this one.
Basically what that is, is that's the remainder, they're all done with the Curtis Street as far as the, um, preliminary, uh, billings. And that's what's left to be paid. That is, it came in more than what had originally anticipated and what's left to be paid for the preliminary.
What's the balance, Sam?
Yeah, how much? How much is it? Seven thousand? And this is, this is for, uh...
Okay, fourteen. Fifteen, that's what, transfer funds for three more of these two trays. Sixteen. That sale of property at 201 Chestnut Street?
Yes, it's a tax delinquent property, um, we're going to authorize for this after. At this first meeting in December.
Seventeen. Uh, this is a proposal by Mr. Ouzi, who we owe seventeen thousand dollars, if you recall, for his easement, uh, to put the Nestle water sewer storm sewer through. And he has asked that the water bill he owes be re-applied to that to reduce the amount we owe him. What goes on?
How much does the water go, Morton?
It's over two thousand now, has he got the resolution?
Two thousand, three fifty-two oh seven.
Okay, and they're discussing garbage pickup.
Yeah, I was gonna break some stuff up on garbage pickup. As we know, the stickers aren't working. And I had Joe, Jimmy and Buck Graham put together some, some figures that I really haven't had a chance to look at yet, but it, I wanted just to talk about it. Hopefully, I don't want to do it tonight now because I haven't looked at these figures, but I wanted to put a little presentation together of what some of our options are with garbage pickup.
You want to put it on next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Agenda for November sixteenth. Uh, city softball league, there's been a proposal, I don't know if everybody has read, uh, the proposal from Mr. Ostrander or not, to form a city softball league. And it's pretty extensive and the is, there are some serious legal implications involved. And I, I would suggest referring it to the city attorney because, uh, we're gonna have to know what this legal ramifications are before the council acts on it, if that's satisfactory with the council.
I, I kind of read the proposal a little bit too, Mayor, and, uh, it may be a little bit more than the city wants to get into right now if we're gonna consider opening North Bay and, uh, cause that's one of the things, uh, we've been talking about also, and I know Barry has a proposal for that too. You know, doing a lot of things at once here, you're spreading people kind of thin, but that's a good, that's a good.
Anybody object to that? I'll refer to city attorney. Day three is closing at State Street from 481 to South First Street, that was the request from the, uh, Seerife. Have we got anything new input on that from Joey Ilo?
I talked to Joe two or three times about this and their recommendation is not to do it because obviously 481 and Route three is, uh, an intersection that gets a lot of accidents. And if there were an accident at that intersection and people are heading northbound on 41, it gets bottlenecked right there. And they use State Street as a, a detour to get traffic around that intersection, especially for emergency vehicles. If an ambulance had to come up there and you wouldn't want them to get stuck at that intersection. So they use it to have them go down to First Street and go across the river or continue down to Topeka Towers or wherever they might be headed. And they really, he really can't see if where they're gonna pick up any more parking or anything by closing the street than by leaving it open.
I, uh, I do that sometimes myself. I'm going across the river and I see a pileup on, uh, 481 and Route three, all detour down State Street. Anybody else got any thoughts on it?
So, for the sake of public safety, they recommend to leave it open.
Yeah, I think I'd have to agree with that. Okay, uh, executive session has pending litigation. Does anybody have anything else they want to bring before the council? I might know something. Yeah.
Is that pending litigation, is that what this is all about here?
Yes.
Yeah, I've got a, a request from Jim Best, Granby Supervisor, for, uh, water. There's a, uh, development that is on 481 and 48 south. That water, just south of the water district apparently, and they need, uh, ten thousand gallons a day. So, he has made that request. Apparently, uh, if they don't get the water, they're gonna have a problem, I guess, with that development. Any thoughts?
Just to use it to negotiate a deal on taxes or something at the treatment plan in North Bay.
I, I would agree with that, I mean...
Idea has a lot of merit. Matter of fact, I've been, I had discussions with Jim on water and sewer proposals that were fairly concrete and that this was a year ago. And he never got back to me. Well, uh, we had foot maps and everything that we had consolidated on, thing I broke, but I never heard any more.
I think this probably should be an ongoing thing between town of Granby and the city. You know, give them extra number a thousand and get relief from North Bay or let us annex it into the city. Give them a little bit more, get a, more of a decrease at the treatment plan and...
Makes, makes good sense. Maybe oughta pre-communicate with it. Well, I think what they're trying to do is nibble away at us.
Well, we can nibble back.
I will get in touch with Mr. Best. Anything else anybody wants to bring up tonight?
Nothing particular.
I might have a statement about the fact. I'll have a comment.
Comment on what?
We actually received a decision on the fact versus... Okay, well, still got some time before seven thirty, so if anybody wants to get up and exercise, walk around while it feels free.
He should've just said, hey, we got, we got to do, just wait. He said that once here. I think a letting for the man.
I guess he still...
Got any job openings, Ross?
Another.
Good.
Let's see, if I'd have been maybe one second sooner. I hit one once. One tick to the clock and we can start.
We're gonna start running these out if I, if you ask me. Take care of the city budget. I don't know.
I think I feel like I'm getting ready to start the race.
That's great.
Okay, can I have a plauditus? Welcome to the fourth meeting before the end of the year. Roll call, please.
Mayor?
Present.
First Ward?
Here.
Second Ward?
Here.
Third Ward?
Here.
Fourth Ward?
Here.
Fifth Ward?
Here.
Sixth Ward?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. First item.
For the meeting the council held on May eighteenth, city clerk was authorized, directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held in the common council chambers relative to the proposed amendment abandonment of Wilbur Street. The hearing is now declared open.
Just for your information, I don't know how many are familiar with Wilbur Street. It's a one block street that's between Sixth and Seventh Streets, uh, across from Nestle's and one block south of, uh, Pay Street. And there are nobody on that block anymore except Nestle. And that is, uh, very close to their proposed addition and they would like the street abandoned so that they, this will facilitate the construction of the new building, new addition. The last building on that street, Semiraro has made a deal with Nestle to sell to Nestle. So there isn't any house owner or residents on the street that would be affected by it. Yes, Diana?
On roads are between Sixth and Seventh?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, no, just that one block. Well, it isn't a one block street, I'm sorry. I meant that's just that one block that is involved. Two blocks, right? Okay, yeah, just that one block between Sixth and Seventh. Any comment? Any comment from the council? Public meeting, a public hearing is closed. Resolution, please.
Whereas the public, members of the council, those intenants who wish to voice your opinion regarding the proposed amendment to Wilbur Street have been heard, be resolved that proposed abandonment of Wilbur Street is hereby approved.
I'll move it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Two, please.
Resolved that the issuance, insurance certificate of Utica Mutual Insurance issued to Joseph Cortini to fifteen Keuga Street for signed liability from November fourth ninety-three to November fourth ninety-four in amount of a thousand dollars in favor of the city of Fulton is approved.
Motion, please. I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Three, please.
Resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to sign the unified court system maintenance and operations voucher for the period of October one ninety-two through September thirtieth of ninety-three.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Four, please.
Resolved that a tree located on the corner of Utica and South Street to be added to the current tree list for removal at a cost not to exceed six hundred and eighty-five dollars. Be direct charged at A fifty-one ten forty, maintenance of streets account for the letter from Area Line and Tree Company dated October twelfth. Be further resolved, the Chamberlain is hereby authorized, directed to transfer six hundred and eighty-five dollars from the judgment and claims account to the maintenance of streets account to cover the cost.
John, you wanna comment on that?
Uh, well, that, that one's not in my ward, but, uh, when I did speak with Area Line and Tree Company about, uh, uh, number seven, you know, they did mention that, that it was a hazard in the area and they...
Oh, I... No, I'm sorry, I got them turned around. Yours was, you requested one oh three West First Street. And the other one, United Street, uh, Ross, I guess you had some notice that that was a dangerous tree also, is that right?
That was David.
David. That was mine, I said he was put on notice that there was being a hazard created due to the sidewalk conditions of blocking the traffic light. Thank you. I went through half the council and finally got the right member. Motion, please.
Excuse me?
I'll move it.
Yeah. Yes. Don?
South Street.
Where's what?
South Street.
Should've been South Seventh Street.
Oh, yours says South Street?
Yeah, the resolution.
Mine's, mine's the South Seventh, so I guess you got the, it should've been, uh, South Seventh.
It's a typo.
Yeah.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Five, please.
Whereas per the memo from traffic, Lieutenant Joseph Ilo dated October eighth, he has informed the council that he has received several requests for a crossing guard intersection of Anita and the Holly Drive. That there is currently one crossing guard position that is budgeted for but has not been filled. Whereas Lieutenant Ilo suggests that there is a need for a crossing guard at this location due to the number of children involved, be resolved that the police department be directed to employ one crossing guard at the intersection of United Street and Holly Drive effective immediately.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Six, please.
Notation, city clerk has been advised at this council meeting of November fourth, that the proper letter of disclosure pursuant to section eight oh three of general municipal law has been filed with him by, by the following employee and that said disclosure is entered in the minutes of this meeting of November fourth as matter record, Dave Ritchie, Recreation Department.
Eight, our seven, please.
Resolved that a tree located at one oh three West First Street be added to the current tree list for removal at a cost not to exceed five hundred and forty-four dollars. Be direct charged at A fifty-one ten forty, maintenance of streets account for letter dated from Area Line Tree, October twelfth ninety-three. Be further resolved, the Chamberlain is authorized and directed to transfer five hundred and forty-four dollars from the judgment and claims account to the maintenance of streets account to cover the cost.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Eight, please.
Resolved, scheduled bills payable dated on August seventeenth nineteen ninety-three through November first nineteen ninety-three are hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Nine, please.
Resolved, city clerk's report, receipts and disbursements for the month of September ninety-three in the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-three seven, thirty-three cents is hereby received, approved and placed on file.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Ten, please.
Resolved, the city clerk is hereby authorized, directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on December seventh at seven thirty P M in the council chambers relative to the proposed amendment to the rules and regulations of the Fulton Municipal Board of Plumbing Examiners.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Eleven, please.
Resolved that Niagara Mohawk install a hundred watt high pressure sodium street light on pole ten at fifty-three West Fourth Street.
I'll move it.
Second.
Uh, incidentally, this is at the expense of Niagara Mohawk, it does not cost the city anything and this is apparently a area that's quite dark and needs illumination. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried.
This will cost us the regular charge like all the other street lights. Just the installation.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they don't furnish any free light. Twelve, please.
Resolved, the city clerk is hereby authorized, directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on December twenty-first, seven thirty P M in the council chambers, the municipal building, relative to the proposed adoption of a local fair housing law.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Thirteen, please.
This is a bond resolution authorizing the issuance of an additional seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar serial bonds of the city of Fulton, Swiggle County, New York, to pay additional costs of the reconstruction of Curtis Street in and for the said city.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Fourteen, please.
Resolved that the following bill is hereby approved for payment, Swiggle County Solid Waste, six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for October hauling, be direct charged to the G eighty-one thirty forty-nine, sewage treatment disposal account. The above item is budgeted but over the thousand dollar charter limit, requires the council's approval.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Fifteen, please.
Resolved, city Chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to transfer two thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars from the judgment and claims account to the fifty-one ten forty, maintenance of streets account for the removal of three trees by Nestle's and one tree located at three eleven Highland Street.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Total?
It's about forty-three thousand right now. Talking to Ryan Edick today about it.
Oh, yeah, Neil? Thank you. You're welcome.
Where were we? Was it carried?
Okay.
It's right sixteen.
Sixteen. Sixteen, please.
Um, resolved, city clerk is hereby authorized, authorized and directed to advertise for a public auction to be held on December seventh, seven thirty P M in council chambers, the municipal building Fulton, New York, for the purpose of selling any right title or interest to the property located at two oh one Chestnut Street. Be further resolved that the condition of the sale requires a minimum bid. I need to know from the council what they want for a minimum bid.
Any thoughts?
Is there any appraisal on it?
I didn't believe the ten that we had attached, it was drawn in the original, wasn't it?
General mayor suggesting ten thousand. Any objections?
For a house?
That's minimal.
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 Minimal, oh, yeah. Yeah, you can't set a maximum bid anyway. Okay?
Value limit.
Make it ten thousand.
Okay, we need to know also what you want down at the, what, what the percent you want down at the time of the auction. Usually it's fifty percent, but it's up to the council.
Twenty?
I'd say ten percent.
The balance in how many days?
Time of closing.
Okay.
Ten percent cash or certified check payment by the close of the next business day by the successful bidder and balance paid at time of closing with bidding increments of five hundred dollars. Be further resolved, this council reserves the right to reject any and all bids that they deem not to be in the best interest of the city of Fulton.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Seventeen, please.
Whereas there was an easement agreement entered into with the city of Fulton with James Ouzi in June thirtieth nineteen ninety-three allowing entry and egress by the city of Fulton in order to build a pump station for the Nestle storm sewer project. Whereas in settlement of said agreement, common coun... Whereas in settlement of said agreement, common council wishes to, um, deduct from the easement agreement the amount of the water bill.
Is that what, is that, yeah. Are you deducting, deducting from his, his agreement?
Um, in settlement, the council would deduct two thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and seven cents, which is a water bill from the easement, which we owe Mr. Alusi, which is seventeen thousand dollars.
And he will be-
I, I gotta ask a question.
No, I got it here.
Do you want to ask a question?
Mayor.
On the twenty.
Mayor, because I was working, I was a little bit late getting here, and I missed this in the pre-meeting, I'd kind of like a brief explanation of what we're-
Sure. We owe Alusi seventeen thousand dollars on the easement across his property to build the Nestle Storm Sewer and the pumping station. Pumping station will be located on his property. He owes the city, was it two thousand?
Three fifty-two oh seven.
Three fifty-two oh seven water bill as of October twentieth this year. He is asking us to deduct that from what we owe him and of course mark his bill paid as of that day. Any other comment?
When do we have to give him what we owe, what we owe him?
Pardon?
When do we have to pay him what we owe him for-
When we get all our, our fin- financing. We're still waiting for financing from, uh, I don't know, E D A or some-
Okay.
Got one question, does that water bill include all penalties?
Yes. I got that figure from the water department this afternoon. Anyone else? Okay. Motion, please.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carrie. Discussion, uh, number one has been put on the agenda for eleven sixteen. Uh, John Crook was looking at some figures on that, and he only got them today, he hasn't had an opportunity to, uh, put it together.
What, what I'd like to do for, uh, public's benefit is, next meeting, uh, we know right now that garbage stickers were, are not working, we're not realizing the revenue that we thought we would get from that. So, I've asked for some information on, uh, some private haulers, uh, what it costs the city to do it, and I'd like to put on a little informative presentation and get some comments from the public on what, what they feel they'd like. Just kind of an informative meeting, if you have any questions about garbage, pick up, uh, maybe we can answer some of them here.
Uh, item two, the proposal for a city softball league has been referred to the city attorney, there's some serious legal questions involved, and he has to answer before the council wants to take it up.
Right, but any, any final decision that we would make on garbage, we would have to do it at a public hearing, correct?
Yes. Uh, three, uh, is, this, the closing of State Street from four eighty-one to South First Street has been requested by, uh, Seawright Company who are remodeling a building on that one block for offices. They're moving out of their present offices into the new offices as soon as their remodeling is complete. Uh, they have asked for this, uh, because they feel like it's going to be hazardous for their people to be going back and forth crossing that street to parking, and they would prefer then, of course, move parking up in front of the building. And I understand that, uh, Jim Myers is saying that Joey Yello, the traffic supervisor, doesn't think that, uh, this is a good idea, because there are people who turn down that block off four eighty-one and off First Street to avoid going through the intersections of, uh, Route three and four eighty-one and South First Street, and I frankly have to agree with that. In fact, Joe has also mentioned this before to the council. Uh, I do that myself sometimes. If I'm going south, north on four eighty-one, and I see a pileup on the intersection of Route three and four eighty-one, I'll take a left on, uh, State Street if I'm going across the river, and then go through the First Street intersection with Route three. Anybody else have any comment on it? I, I really don't see where that improves their parking situation, it isn't going to, it might increase it slightly, but I doubt it would increase it very much. Phil?
Have we checked with the hospital on this, because the, you know, that, I think it generated a lot of traffic down, down by the hospital that way.
On State Street?
Oh, it's on the other side.
No, this is State Street. Yeah. Grace?
Even if they closed the street, they couldn't move the parking anyways, so they maintain the parking lane from the length of the building.
Oh, yeah. Oh, good. Okay. Dinah?
Because on that short intersection, to be detrimental to the office help anyway, it's not like it's a school where there's children crossing it.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
Suddenly go back and forth to their cars is when it's coming, going out of work.
I wouldn't think so either. They've been doing it for years, I don't know why it's suddenly such a-
That's one thing, but just because they want people to use their cars, people's cars, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I, I have to agree, Dinah. Anybody else?
Can I make a comment about another street that's awful?
About what?
Um-
Well, let me finish with that, then.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, how does the council feel about that? If a resolution were offered to do that, what would be your response? John? Jim?
How many know?
John?
That's the recommendation.
No?
I have to go where the traffic was turning.
Jim?
David?
No.
Ross?
Have they done a traffic study on it? And it was, he recommended it would be all right?
No.
No.
They're against it.
Okay, no.
Okay. All right, I'll advise you, say a word.
Do we want to do a resolution to that fact, just, just the same, to send to them, or?
Well, I suppose, yeah, we ought to do a resolution.
Resolved that the closing of, uh, State Street from Route four eighty-one south to South First Street is hereby approved.
I'll move it. Wait, 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 wait.
No, we, we-
Well, no, you, you vote no.
Yeah.
If you don't want it, you say no.
You just put on the table, vote on it, and then send them the results of the vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second?
I'll second it.
Uh, roll call vote.
First ward.
Can we still do a voice vote?
Second ward.
No.
Third ward.
No.
Fourth ward.
No.
Fifth ward.
No.
Sixth ward.
No.
Did I-
Resolution is defeated.
Super secret, true, false, trick question.
Uh, Spencer, you wanted to address the-
Just, uh, briefly report on, uh, Judge Herbert issued a decision on Wednesday in the case of the Fulton Association of Concerned Taxpayers versus, uh, the City of Fulton. Uh, that was an action to, uh, petition the court to nullify the actions of the common counsel of August thirty-first, September seventh, and September twenty-first. Uh, the city, as well as Wide Waters who intervened in the action, uh, with permission from the city, as well as the petitioner's attorney who gave them permission to intervene, we argued that, uh, any action taken on August thirty-first was cured by the subsequent, uh, open meetings of September seventh and September twenty-first, and therefore, any defect, if any, was, uh, therefore cured by those open meetings. Um, in fact, uh, the law is quite clear, should the council have chosen, uh, no public hearing would have been required. Uh, in any event, the court agreed with the city and dismissed, uh, the action.
Got something else you want to bring up?
Fay Street, where the tracks are.
Where, on Fay?
Say, between the arterial, our Fay Street, between arterial and First Street. If you're going west, turn off, uh, the arterial, go down Fay where the tracks all are, that they removed the tracks, the road was, such as, they took the tracks out, but they've never done a thing to the road, the roads are still, as if you're still going over washboards, nothing has been done with it. I don't know if it's the city's supposed to take care of that, or Conrel when they took the tracks out. And Conrel, if they own their property, weeds this high constantly, it's disgusting looking. There's a young man, these people that just bought that house and have all renovated it, on the left-hand side is the first house right over the tracks, if you want to say it over the tracks, and just done a tremendous job of fixing it, and the surrounding property is disgraceful, there's nothing nearby, grown weeds, and all in that area.
You're talking about the tracks, be, uh, east of, uh, First Street?
Yes.
That crosses Fay?
Right.
They took some of the tracks out?
They took half of them out. They took a lot of them out.
Oh, okay, I'll take a look at it.
They don't use that much now, but the road is disgusting, I mean, you can lose hubcaps and tires and everything else on there, and it's around the arterial.
They put out now, they put out the budget, make rest of the tracks out, it's in the process now.
The tracks out?
They're gonna heat up everybody in there. I called the contractor, and he wanted to know if they're gonna bid on it, and there's a bid out now, they're gonna remove the rest of the tracks.
All the tracks leading to Seawright?
The ones that go across Fay Street, I think there's three or four sets left.
So they will address the problem? We hope, I hope while they're at it, they'll take out all those old railroad ties that are laying along those tracks. Okay, well, I guess that answers your question, Dinah. Anyone else want to bring anything before the council, yeah, Rod?
Uh, Spencer, White Waters filed the petition yet for annexation?
No.
They said it'd take about a week, they could-
I anticipate that, uh, it's very, it's within a few days.
Yeah.
We're gonna have an early November, um, joint meeting with the town of Valley, it's, it's moving on quite rapidly, I, uh, rest assured, things are moving extremely, more rapidly than I anticipated. A week was a little optimistic, I think, on her part, but, uh, we're, rest assured that, uh, things are moving quite along, quite quickly.
I had a letter from her today, a fax to that effect.
John, you said you were gonna, or you did talk to Frank Hollers? What's the possibility of-
I had, I had Joe Tietro and Jimmy Laboda and Bucky put some numbers together for me, uh, regarding where we are right now on garbage pickup revenues and some of the options that we might have.
One of the options, maybe the city could consider, is, I didn't realize until I talked to Buck a while ago, the city doesn't get anything for picking up the recyclables. You could probably hire that out and get paid, and Frank Hollers, they make money picking that stuff up, and they might come, most of the trash pickup, yes, recyclables, not trash, and have a private poll, just pick up the recyclables. The city might make money that way. But Bucky's been to do the, the rest of the work that they usually, just pick up the garbage.
Good action. Okay, come to the meeting, I'll just, I'm just gonna present some facts of where we are, and if anybody has any suggestions, you know, bring them to the table then.
Maybe what you could do-
Good idea.
Maybe what you could do, John?
Yes.
According to the newspaper, the part of that ruling from the judge, the August thirty-first meeting was declared illegal, was it not?
No, it was not.
The newspaper's ruling?
Which paper?
The judge, tonight.
I don't recall, the judge, on a motion dismissed by the City of Fulton, dismissed the action.
The judge ruled that the August thirty-first meeting was illegal, but the second meeting was legal, and therefore, white, you know, recor- uh, recognized what happened in the first meeting with the exception stuff, the session meeting was ruled illegal by the judge.
September twenty-first made it okay, because they revoked it.
The subsequent meetings cured any defect of a prior meeting.
I was told that that meeting was illegal.
Anyone else? Percy?
We're going to executive session, however.
We will, as soon as I-
Will you come back, uh, vote on anything, I'd like to know, I'd like to hang around if you are.
The only thing we're going to executive session on is pending litigation against the city that would, uh, I don't think there's anybody here would be concerned about that. We have to discuss what action the city's going to take on this litigation.
Come back, in a turn, if you want to.
Yes.
There'll be no votes on any other issue.
No, there isn't any other issue to be discussed in the executive session. Yeah, you're welcome. Yes.
Yes, Mayor, uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome the winners, and welcome to thank the candidates, uh, for one, and have served our city the last few years. I would like to make a statement a little bit, uh, purposely to the press, and to the number of phone calls which I received, uh, which I would say were valid phone calls, I understand and realize fully that the write-in procedure is not the most acceptable technique to elect a official. They find it unacceptable because it's a last-minute type of thing, it disrupts some of the, uh, the normal way of electing, uh, and following the democratic process. I understand that fully. The phone calls I received the last few days, which were numerous, because the papers failed to relate the number of write-in votes which I received, and which I received accepted with pride. Uh, I'm only asking that my position be stated in public on behalf of those constituents of the first ward who voted for me, and for the large number of people in the first ward through confusion and otherwise difficult procedure lost their vote. I believe the final tally was something of a hundred and thirty-eight. Uh, one paper listed no votes counted, uh, other papers failed to present my position, and other papers throughout the campaign, I would have to say treated me more or less as just somebody who kind of jumped into, uh, for the free ride. Let me tell you, anybody who serves or represents the public does not look for a free ride. I applaud Mr. Lincoln, uh, for his, uh, for his win, but it has not changed my position any more than Mr. Luddington tonight, giving us the legalese about not being able to still simply say we lost the motion on the first go-around or the first meeting, and, uh, the cure-all type of stuff. I would hope that, uh, that we can get away from this, uh, this type of stuff, and you s- we can understand very simply when something happens. Just, just tell us to us the way we can understand it. We don't need a lot of dancing around the mayhem, but I don't want to get into that part of it, I wanted the press to realize that my constituency, uh, was quite proud of the attempt I made, I was very proud of the effort I put forth, I'm very pleased with those of you who have served and look forward to those who are coming in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Excuse me, uh, I have a letter for the city here. Uh, on many occasions, I've asked about the snow removal from the sidewalks along Utica Street near Seventh, and I've talked to the city attorney, I've talked to people in the mayor's office, nobody seems to know whose responsibility it is to take the snow off
with those of you who have served and look forward to those who are coming in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I have a letter for the city here. On many occasions, I've asked about the snow removal from the sidewalks along Utica Street near 7th, and I've talked to the city attorney, I've talked to people in the mayor's office. Nobody seems to know whose responsibility it is to take the snow off the sidewalks in the winter. They don't know whether it's the owners or the city's responsibility.
Well, I can answer that. It is the owners.
Well, I've called. My daughter has almost been hit a couple times along Utica Street. Once it was the city school lunch truck, and every time I've called, nobody seems to know who should do it, and there's no enforcement of anybody cleaning the sidewalk.
I think you'll find it in the city ordinance at 7th.
Is this... excuse me, is this very adjacent to the school?
No, this is at 7th and Utica, where my daughter gets off her bus and walks up Utica, heading toward Route 3. She's been hit a couple times. Cars come close, splatter with slush, and, like I said, I have gotten no help from the times I've called the mayor's office and...
Wait a minute. What's your name?
My name's Dave Martini-Sean.
I never had a call from you.
I talked to, I believe, your secretary.
If you did, I never got a message from you, because I return all the messages I get.
Get a message. I did leave one, and, like I said, I've called many times over the last two years trying to find out whose responsibility it is.
Well, if you had called the city attorney, could have told you very quickly.
I did call the city attorney. He didn't seem to know whether it was the city's responsibility or the owner's.
I... quite frankly, I don't remember our conversation, but I'd be happy to, if you want to call me. I'll be in on Tuesday, and we can talk about it and figure it out. But to show you a charter, I think that it's the owner's responsibility.
No, let me take his name and address, and I will write him a letter. What's your... how do you spell your last name? Address? Okay. I have a log, and you never called me.
Okay, I didn't call you.
I'll write you a letter.
I just want to briefly respond to Mr. Carroll, a former teacher of mine, regarding your comments about legalese and dancing on the maypole. I've been instructed by my client, the city, to concede nothing, and unfortunately, a lot of times lawyers, and particularly municipal attorneys, are put in very difficult situations. And throughout the past two years, I've always gone down fighting, and it's not my job to determine what's right or wrong. I'm instructed to go to battle, go down fighting, and one of the instructions given to me was concede nothing and make motions to dismiss. I can't... I'm not in a position to determine whether that's right or wrong. My job is to fight for the city, and I think I've done a good job, and I don't believe I'm dancing on the maypole, but it's always an effort to protect the city at any cost, so that's my job. And it's a political decision if it was right or wrong, not a... and I'm instructed to do it, and I go do it.
Yeah, and I will verify the fact that he has done an excellent job, and Spencer has never been one to dance around the maypole. I think your choice of words is unfortunate, Tom, especially someone as well-educated and able to speak as you are. And frankly, I regret the fact that we have seen so much of that here. Anyone else? Fran?
Mayor, I'm inquiring about a piece of equipment that we purchased at the beginning of the recycling. The three-bid trailer, which hasn't been used for a long time for several reasons, and I'm wondering where that is, and if it's not being used, whether we could sell it to someone else.
She asked me at the last meeting if I would find out the information on that, and I did talk to Bucky. The trailer is at the city garage. It can no longer be used for pickup. It cost us approximately $15,000 to buy, and Bucky's recommendation is that approximately next June, it should be used as a trade-in item on another piece of equipment, whatever it might be, to get the most value out of it.
Anyone else?
Nothing. Doesn't fit in with the way the recycling works.
Yeah, apparently it isn't adaptable to the recycling process, Fran. Anyone else? Anyone from the council? Motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried.